To the order please rise for the flag sign. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tap onto, tap into online news, and filed with the township clerk posted on the district website. Could I have a roll call?
Mr. Grandi.
Here.
Mr. Marzullo.
Here.
Mr. Pallack.
Here.
Mrs. Keegan.
Here.
Mrs. Dora.
Here. Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Hello. See that nobody has signed up for the first reading of public comment agenda items only, so we closed that section, session, section of the meeting, and we were going to move on to, I think we're going to go right into the budget presentation. Let's start with that, and then we'll reconvene after for community reports. All yours, Mr. DeVita.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the 2024-25 budget hearing. This first slide here just describes the timeline of just how long the budget process takes. Usually around December, information is sent out to all the principals and directors, and they prepare their own building-based budgets, and then it comes to myself and the superintendent, and we gather everything together and meet with the finance committee and review the budget with the board. That's through February, March. At the end of February, the SDA figures were released. We did receive an increase in state aid this year of just under $175,000. Then the board approved the tentative budget on March 19th. That was then submitted to the county office, and the county superintendent approved the preliminary budget on April 2nd. So what's being presented tonight is the budget that was submitted to the county superintendent for approval. So the board will be approving the final tax levy numbers tonight for next year's budget. Doesn't mean that the funds that are in the presented accounts will remain there in the same accounts by the end of the school year. It just means that the budget is a fluid process, so, you know, amounts can change in accounts, you know, if certain things happen, if something is needed for a student or, you know, a teacher retires or whatever, there's always ways to move the funds around. This next slide here just categorizes all of the expenditure accounts. I'll go into much more detail in future slides. So the budget is basically just broken down into instructional programs, which is all regular education items, special education, employee benefits, support services, and operations and maintenance. So all those categories together, they make up our operating budget, which is $37,827,000. We have our special revenue fund is just under $1.6 million. That's all of the grants that we receive from the state and federal government. And our debt service fund is $2.339 million. This is all of the principal and interest payments for the bonds that we are paying off. Currently, we have three bonds from referendums that were already approved, the 2012, 2016, and 2019 bonds. So the total annual budget is $41,763,359, and is an increase of about half a percent from last year. This slide here just shows a pie chart, just the items that I mentioned and categories on the previous slide. So the instructional programs make up the most of the budget, 29 percent. Employee benefits is next, at 21.3 percent. Support services is 20.1 percent. Special education is 19.8, and operations and maintenance budget is 9.8 percent, and this is of the operating budget only. This slide here shows the operating revenue. Majority of our budget is obviously from our local tax levy, which is the amount of funds that are raised by the taxpayers, which is 31.8 million. We do receive state aid. As I mentioned, we did receive an increase of just under $175,000. So our total state aid for next year is projected to be at $2.263 million. We do receive pilot money every year. It's $1.2 million from the township. We have an agreement with them for 25 years for the Hilltop development. Then we have a budget fund balance. This is just a surplus, an unused surplus that carries over as per our audit. Extraordinary aid, this are the funds that we receive from the state for sending special education students out of district. We apply for that, and then we get that money. Tuition, these are for regularized students that we have coming into the district and some special ed ones. They're not Cedar Grove residents. We do have a few Verona students that come in in our progressions program. We have a Glen Ridge student in our high school and a West Colville, West Colville student in the middle school, and also our preschool is included in here. The withdrawal of maintenance reserve, these are used for funds that are towards ordinary maintenance. We have a reserve account for this every year, so that's what that is. Just to continue, our aftercare program, we do have a contract with Alphabet for before care and aftercare, and this is as per the contract with them. This is the minimum balance that we would be receiving as a revenue share. Interest income is all of the interest that we receive from our banks. Misaligned income is just some like prior year refunds or any misaligned income that comes into the district. A rental of fields and buildings. We do rent out our auditorium for dance recitals and competitions, and we do rent our athletic fields for some programs. SEMI is, this is our first year that we're required to participate in SEMI. There's a certain amount of students, and we're over that, so we do have to participate in that. And transportation is just our, the funds we receive from our parents for students that ride the buses, but they're not eligible to receive free busing. This is just a pie chart that shows, as I mentioned, the local tax levy is the majority of our budget. It's 84 percent. Our state aid is next with 6 percent. Our pilot money is 3.2 percent. Fund balance is 3.1 percent. Extraordinary aid, 1.3 percent, and all of our rest adds up to less than 1 percent. Now on to our expenditures. This will be a little bit more detailed from what I mentioned on the first slide. This is our, the instructional programs category. Our regular programs are basically all of the salaries of all regular instruction teachers in grades K to 12. It also includes any substitute teachers or class coverage or anything like that. We also have our software for students is included in here. Copy releases and certain supplies for every grade level are included in here. Basic skills and ESL, these are all the salaries and supplies in both areas. Media services is a salary of our media specialist, and also some programs and services and supplies for the libraries in elementary level. And instructional staff training, these are a percentage of our district supervisors is included here, and also includes all curriculum writing. For next year, we are required to rewrite all math and language arts curriculums, so that's included in the budget. And also any professional development and training and online subscriptions is included here. So that brings our total to 10.977. Special education, the instruction part includes all the salaries. These are all of our in-district staff that work. We have an LOD program, our resource room, preschool disabilities, and also a progressions program. So it's all the salaries and services for all those. Out-of-district tuition, we currently have 23 out-of-district students placed in private schools, so that's the budget for them, and we do supplement some of our budget with our IDA grant, which is a federal grant. For related and extraordinary services, this includes all services for in-house speech. We have interventionists, ABA services, and therapy services also. And child study team, these are all the salaries of our child study team members, and supplies and professional development, and our software program. Next, employee benefits. Social Security, these are payments to the state for all non-certificated staff, such as secretaries, custodians. That's included here. Retirement contributions, the state pays for all certificated staff's pension, but the board has to pay for the pensions of all the non-certificated staff, so that's included here. Workers' comp is the premium for our insurance coverage for workers' comp. Tuition reimbursement is as per our union contracts, just to reimburse staff for classes and some other items that's in the contract. Other contractual obligations, these are any custodial uniforms, any sick day payouts or anything that's part of the contract. Health benefits is obviously the biggest cost here. This is all of our medical prescription and dental coverage. We are in the state health benefit plan, our, for our medical only. Our dental and prescription is in a private plan, and we do always look at our claims history every year to see if we could, if we had to remain in the state plan. A lot of districts are starting to go into, it's like with other school districts, it's like a health insurance fund, but our claims history isn't there yet where we could do that, but we are looking every year to see if we can do that. Next, we have support services. This is obviously everything that supports all of our students. Our attendance and health is all of our nursing salaries and an attendance secretary. Guidance is all the counselors in all the schools, and we also have a SAC in the high school and our student software. General administration, this is all of the salary for the superintendent's office and all of the professional fees, attorney fees, audit fees, you know, certain professionals like that and dues included in there. School administration is all of our principals, vice principals, directors and secretaries in all schools. And also supplies, essential services, and admin IT, this is all of the business office staff and also technology department and our personnel and accounting software that we use. Transportation is the big one here. This also includes the salaries of our own bus drivers. We do have four of our own bus drivers. We do outsource 14 routes, and we have four of our own drivers do it, so it includes all those prices. We are purchasing an athletic bus through our ESAR grant, so that'll help reduce our athletic transportation in the future, and also includes all, transportation for non-public students is also included here. And athletics and co-curricular, these are all of the coaches' salaries, the trainer, any game helper, advisors in all the schools, and supplies for all athletic teams is included here. Next, we have our operations and maintenance budget. This basically includes all of our fees to basically run our buildings, to maintain them, to keep them clean, to when something breaks, our boiler breaks, or, you know, a pipe has to be repaired. It includes all those prices to maintain that, and all of our gas and electric expenses are included here. Security is also included here. These are all the armed security guards that we have in the buildings, and also camera repair, cell phones, and panic buttons are included here. And capital outlay, this includes the debt service assessment from the state that we're required to pay. Because we have bonds through the SDA, we're required to pay that every year, and some technology switches. This next slide here, it's basically a close analysis of our budget. I always like to break our budget into fixed categories and discretionary categories. Your fix are all your, basically your personnel, you know, salaries, benefits, and all that, everything that's in the contracts. That's the majority of your budget. And then you also have student costs and for any special education, transportation, and other professional costs is also included in the fixed category. So when you add everything up, our total fixed costs in our budget are $35.956 million, and our discretionary funds are the remaining of it, so that's about $1.8 million. Last year's fixed costs have increased by a little under $1.4 million, so that means our discretionary costs have a decrease because of that. This slide here just shows a pie chart of the categories I just spoke about. Personnel, as I mentioned, is obviously the biggest chunk of the budget, 71 percent. Student costs relate to 12 percent. The professional costs are about 3.7 percent, and the discretionary is just under 5 percent. We do have some new items that are included in our budget. We have a new, some personnel, a BCBA is going to be used for our special ed department. It's going to help keep a special ed student in district. We have an in-class resource teacher for our kindergarten. This is needed because of increased enrollment. Freshman football coach is also needed because of increased enrollment. And we are going to be implementing some new math programs for grades K through 2 and also in grade 8 for next year. And as each of the last four or five years, I don't remember when it started, but we are continuing to get the new Chromebooks for grades 1, 5, and 9 as part of our one-to-one initiative, so we are continuing to do that. Next slide here just talks about the tax impact, for the school tax impact for operating budget. The average increase for the average home is $477,300, so the average annual increase would be $118. That comes out the per month, just under $10, per week, two and a quarter, and per day, 32 cents. So our estimated school tax rate is increasing from 1.468 to 1.493, or a 1.69 percent increase. And that concludes the presentation.
Perfect timing.
Good to see you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DeVita.
You're welcome.
At this time, does the board have any questions? Any comments, anything that they would like to share regarding the budget? I do have one question, Mr. DeVita and Mr. Russo. I know that through our discussions, committee meeting discussions, that the budget included some speculated monies, potential return of some speculative amounts. Do we have an alternative plan in the event that that is not successful? Has there been any discussions?
Yeah.
You know, is that included in the plan?
We do have, there are some contingencies that are built into the budget in certain areas, special education, transportation. We are going to be approving a new voice-over IP system tonight, so that'll help reduce, I don't know the exact number, but it'll help reduce costs for next year, so that'll help for that, you know, depending on if not all of the items that we're planning on happen. And we do have some money still in surplus that we could always use if we have to, you know, that's always a last resort, but there are, you know, I think there's enough contingencies in the budget that will be okay.
All right. I appreciate your diligence. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions at this point regarding the budget? All right, so we're going to move on to some committee reports. Mr. Kelly? Perfect timing. Mr. Kelly was late because he was busy at Honor Society inductions tonight. So thank you for taking care of both ends. I appreciate that. So why don't you start, so then I can, you can go if you'd like to. Yes, can somebody just share his mic? Yeah, great.
Sorry, thank you. First and foremost, we have the National Honor Society thing. That's the biggest thing going on at the high school right now. So yesterday, we had the whole National Honor Society. That's all the large organization. That's just like the general pool of it. And then today, we had the individual chapters, such as like history, math, science, business, Italian, and I believe Spanish, or all the individual chapters we have at Cedar Grove. And the history one is new as of this year, because we finally got our deposit, and we got approved for it at the high school, so that's our newest society. Next, most important thing, spring sports are in full swing, and we're, you know, obviously our girls' softball team is doing amazing as usual every year. It is scholarship season, so all the seniors are doing our interviews and handing in, you know, extra scholarships when needed. And then, right around the corner, looking up to next week, starting Monday, we have our AP testing coming up. So starting Monday morning, and then spanning it for about two, two and a half weeks, we'll be having our AP testing for all, all students that are currently enrolled in AP classes. And that's, that's all that's going around at the high school currently.
That's it? That's a lot.
Yeah, well, you know, we stay busy over there.
Yes. Yes, Mrs. Keegan and I attended last night to the National Honor Society induction, and it was really impressive how many students were inducted last night. Unfortunately, we couldn't be there tonight, but I'm sure there was an evil amount, if not more.
Oh, even more. It was great, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the speech was good. It's still ongoing, so it's pretty good.
It was really, it was an honor to be there. A little bit cold, though. It was cold. Yes, it was. Fantastic. Well, I appreciate, you know, as always, good luck with your AP exams.
Thank you.
Good luck to everybody at home that may be listening. Sons and daughters are getting ready for these exams. I know it's an intense time, but I'm sure you're all well-prepared, so thank you very much.
Yeah, can't wait.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. All right, so we'll move right into our committee reports. I guess we'll start with curriculum and instruction. We'll go right down, change up the order a little bit. Mr. Pallack, you want to speak about that?
Primarily, much of the information in curriculum instruction is being covered in our particular meetings, especially with the update of the building goals in relationship to our district goals. And next month, you will be able to see the presentations by the two elementary principals on the goals and the significant improvements that they've made in moving the schools forward this year. Also, Mr. DeVita, in his program, had indicated that the adoption of a new math program, which I think is desperately needed at the elementary level to progress into 2025, 26 school year, and very much like math program, very much like world language programs, they are introduced in incremental components. You would not change the whole set of math books and programming for students that are already in fourth grade. So it moves along in a trajectory. So next year, it's through grade 2, and we're very happy that we've made this. This decision was made by all the administrative staff and reviewing a good numbers of series, and we're very pleased with that. And just look forward to next month for those presentations.
Yeah, and I'd just like to add that tonight, there will be a resolution approving the New Jersey High Impact Grant, which we will formally approve tonight. And this is a grant that Mrs. Masato had applied for, and we were awarded it, and that's going to be specifically used for targeted, small group targeted instruction to provide additional assistance for students that have been identified as having some academic needs, so I commend.
If you're correct, that's outside of the normal school day.
It's in addition to, yes. And a shout-out to the teachers who have volunteered to provide those services, so I'm looking forward to see the benefits of that, so I just wanted to add that. All right, we're going to jump into facilities. I think we're going to tag team a little bit, right? So you want to start?
Sure. The ROD grant, as you know, the estimates that we got were, or the bids, I should say, were pretty high, so the scope of the project has been revised for the HVAC and electrical upgrades at North End and South End. We're looking to have it completed over one summer instead of two. And due to the revisions of this project and revisions to the usage of our ESAR funds, we're going to see some parking lot repaving done at both elementary schools, as well as at the high school. In addition to the parking lots being repaved, ESAR funds, as Mr. DeVita said, are being utilized to purchase a 54-passenger bus for athletics. It's going to save the district a substantial amount of money in transportation costs. The district's voice-over IP system and equipment is also being upgraded with the usage of the ESAR funds, along with the clocks in the buildings across the district, and MMS is getting a new paging system. All these upgrades are going to save the district money in the areas of equipment rental and repairs due to the antiquated systems that are becoming more challenging to repair and replace due to rising costs and difficulty finding the parts to replace and repair them.
Yep, and there's also a component to the voice-over system that will increase security.
Yes.
So I wanted to make sure that that was clear. And the only thing that I would add to that, you pretty much read my notes, is there will be a resolution tonight to approve professional services, and that's the strategic environmental services, and they're going to be responsible for removing some expired science lab chemicals. So it has to be done in a very systematic manner, so we'll be approving that as well tonight. And then final payments for our boiler projects are going out, and we're pleased to announce that there was a change order, which basically means there was a decrease in cost, and so we will be receiving, our bill, our final bill would be $7,500 less than originally anticipated. So that's good to know. So that'll all be approved tonight, hopefully. We'll move on to finance?
Yeah, sure, very quickly, because I think everything is being covered already.
I know.
But obviously, from a, from a finance committee perspective, you know, the majority of our time has been spent on the, on the budget, which Mike did a good job of laying that out tonight. But you've already mentioned the ESAR grant, how that's going to be used, and the High Impact Tutoring Grant as well, and I think even Mike touched upon the Chromebook.
Yes.
Lease purchase for grades 1, 5, and 9. Those are really the highlights that I was going to talk about, so, pretty quick update.
Okay. Is there any other updates that anybody has? I think we're good, right?
Yes.
We're good? Okay. I just want, I just have a few, and then a few comments that I'd like to make. I attended the Autism Acceptance Day at the town hall on April 20th. That was really a fun event, so I appreciate the town hall and all that they did for that. It was nice to see, it was a beautiful day. It was really nice to see the families come out. Again, I want to congratulate the, all the students who were inducted in the National Honor Society last night and those that are being inducted tonight. That was really an honor to be invited, and it was, it was nice to be there. Unfortunately, I personally was unable to attend some of the middle school play, which I heard was phenomenal, and the North and South End spring concerts that I heard were even better. It was, you know, the feedback and the social media presence has been really astronomical, so kudos to everyone who played a big part in that. Spring sports are going strong, softball team's doing great. I was able to attend the weekend tournament. It was really impressive, our facilities that was able to handle so many different teams coming into our town and bringing businesses into the town, and it was just really a nice day, because it's all the players everywhere, so. Excited to continue to see that grow. And then I'd just like to take a moment to thank all of the board in its entirety for the time that they've provided over the last few months. We've had a significant need for special meetings, and it has taken a lot of time, a time away from our families, and so I just want to thank everybody for your time and your commitment and the dedication that you, you know, shown over the last couple of months. So I'm excited about what lies ahead. I do want to do, give a little bit of an update on our leadership transition. Dr. T. has already met with each of us as a board individually and has been in contact with, um, all the administrat- the whole administrative team. Um, he has scheduled dates to tour all of the buildings, and then schedule follow-up meetings to meet with each of the building administrators. Um, he's also begun to meet with our town officials, and, um, is fostering working relationships with, um, all of those parties. Next, he will be scheduling meetings with central office staff, and then building-based staff, and then eventually will be meeting with our FSA boards. Um, and then in June and July, the plan is to schedule some opportunities for the community to be able to come out and meet and get to know Dr. T. And then we, uh, I also want to say that I appreciate Mr. Grosso's, uh, continued support and, uh, working with us through this transition. So, um, that's all I have at this point. Um, Mr. Grosso, do you have a superintendent's report?
Yeah, I just have, uh, just, uh, one thing I just want to say is, um, next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I want to just thank all the staff here in Cedar Grove. Um, you know, the staff gets a week of appreciation, but they really, um, they really are, they should be, and they are appreciated every day for taking care of everybody's children, educating them, um, sharing, um, just the basic needs of growing up and being good people. And, uh, just want to thank the staff here in Cedar Grove. Wonderful group of people, talented group of individuals who truly care about kids. And so, um, I just want to just give them a shout out for teacher appreciation. We can thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Grosso. And I second that. I mean, with the board as a whole, we, you know, we really are, uh, we really is a special place here, and we have some really amazing teachers, and we do good work because of the efforts that they put in every day. So, um, I'm looking forward to Teacher Appreciation Week next week. Um, alrighty, so we will move on to some business. All right, under the Business Administration's Report, can I have a motion for G1 through G16?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I actually have a, have a question, um, Mike, on, uh, G6 payment of bills. In reviewing that, I noted, and you can correct me on the amount, but I think it was in excess of $60,000 of, um, public sewer costs or repairs. Can you just maybe talk about that for a few seconds?
Yes, uh, we, we've had a very big problem this year with, um, uh, the, um, plumbing in, in the high school, uh, has been consistently getting clogged. Um, so we've had to pay a contractor to come up to, um, basically suck everything out. Um, and, and every time what they find is all, uh, vapes in the, um, the, the lines. Uh, so pretty much every time that they have to come up, it's, it's about, you know, about $6,000 to $8,000 per time that they, they come up. Um, uh, so it is a, a very big problem, um, you know, that we're, you know, consistently doing. Um, uh, you know, so hopefully, you know, that, that can improve. I know, I think, um, um, Jody's been trying to meet with the staff, uh, the staff, the students up there to, uh, um, you know, try to get, you know, see if we can solve the problem here, but, but it is a very big problem. Uh, you know, in, in all my years, I've, I've never seen, seen, seen expenses, uh, this high before.
So the issue isn't that the plumbing is inadequate. The issue is that things are being flushed.
Yeah, yeah, they're being flushed down the toilet. Um, uh, so it may not happen right away, but then as they, one gets clogged, then as they continue to flush them, then, you know, a lot of them get clogged, and then it causes the, the, um, the, the water to back up, the sewer to back up. I mean, we had one instance where we had a, um, I don't know, was that a couple months ago, where we had to cancel, um, a school, a high school had, had canceled lunch because the, uh, um, you know, sewage was back up into the kitchen. Um, you know, so it is a, you know, a, a consistent problem that we're having.
So, that's certainly unfortunate, and I know that the high school principal is, um, continuously talking with the students and, um, trying to get them to make some better choices. So we appreciate any help at home with relaying that message. Uh, you know, that's money that we certainly would prefer to use on something that directly impacts the students as opposed to plumbing issues. So, uh, any help we could get from there would be greatly appreciated. Um, I do want to say, oh, I'm sorry, David, are you good? Any other questions?
You know, that, that was, that was the only question I had.
Um, on G10, I just want to give a thanks, um, that a generous donation from Mr. R. K. Yopani and the New York Life made a generous donation to enhance our STEM curriculum. So, thank you, Mr. R. K. Yopani and New York Life. We, we do appreciate that very much. Um, is there any more discussion?
No.
Okay, can I have a roll call then?
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes.
Um, superintendent's report, general administration, can I have a motion for H1 through H5 and addendum A1? Addendum A2 will be removed from the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes, but abstain from H3E.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under Human Resources, can I have a motion for I1 through I13?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question on the, um, in the area of, uh, our staff development in regards to professional development and concert, conferences. Um, we have a resolution in the agenda to eliminate a position out of budgetary responsibilities, but yet we're allowing that individual to attend conferences once, and positions eliminated. Uh, I don't know why we'd expend some of those funds.
Uh, she was approved for those funds prior, uh, on pre- uh, previous, uh, agendas. So this is, this is the approval of the actual date that she would be going on that conference.
Well, now we're expen- now we're approving the funds. Now, I need you're approving, you know, closely, you know, significantly.
Well, that, that was a recommendation. You can, you can deny it.
I'm just wondering, you know, why if we're eliminating the position, we'd be sending a person for that position out for professional development?
Because, because she is still an employee of the district and is working in that, in that capacity for work-based related, uh, functions until June 30th.
Understood.
Mr. Grosso, is that a mandated training?
Uh, we do, we do. We do, because if we recall, there was another employee that was supposed to, um, be trained in that, and, uh, they no longer doing that. So then it's, has fallen solely on a director, which is, um, not the-
It's mandated.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Uh, I just want to do, give a shout out to, um, Ms. Ashley Eines, who is on the agenda tonight for, uh, retirement. Twenty-five years at North End, so we appreciate your service and wish you all the luck and, uh, enjoyment in your next journey. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes.
Under Special Services, an emotion for J1 and J2, please?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Okay, at this point, we open the meeting to public comment on any items on or off. The agenda, we do have one. Mr. Michael Bronlin?
Bremm.
I'm sorry.
I apologize. Still confident that I don't have to use.
I, uh, good evening. I'm Michael Bremm, 88 Weston Road here in Cedar Grove. Um, I had two areas I wanted to discuss. One was, uh, the superintendent, and then a budget issue, so I just elected to sign on the one sheet, so I apologize. Um, I think it was four years ago you hired Mr. Grosso, or previous board, uh, hired Mr. Grosso as a superintendent, and, uh, I think he got hired, uh, right around this time, 2020, right in the middle of pandemic, so rolled into September of 2020 with virtual learning, which, as anyone who was paying attention knows, was challenging, difficult, rules change day to day, and it was a daunting task, and I thought he handled it well. Um, sorry.
That's all right.
I thought he handled that very well, and then we rolled into other issues. Uh, I mean, I, I used to see 200 people at a Board of Ed meeting with CBS News vans outside, and people standing at the podium calling for the superintendent's head and immediate resignation. And I give him credit for, uh, handling himself professionally during those times. There was changeover in board members, there was a recall, there were people calling for him to be fired and resign, and I'll tell you, I'm married to someone who, quite honestly, didn't like Mr. Grosso, uh, at that time. But I will also tell you that as a parent of a child in the district, whenever we had concerns and addressed Mr. Grosso, he invited us to his office. Uh, he was professional, he was courteous, and we may not have agreed on everything. Certainly, Mr. Grosso and my wife didn't agree on most things, but I appreciated his willingness to invite us in and speak to him, and, you know, come to a resolution, you know, good, bad, or otherwise, but I always appreciated his efforts, uh, for this community, and I want to thank him for his service to Cedar Grove. Um, my next question was related to the, uh, security portion of the budget. Uh, it's $278,000 and change. Is that for the salaries of the security officers that are assigned to the schools? I'm sorry, should the question be addressed to Mr. DeVita?
Either it's Jackson.
Okay. You'll defer to him.
Better to Kirk.
Okay. That $278,000, is that for the salaries for the security officers?
Yes.
Is, what else comes out of that $278,000? Are you able to tell me? Or is it just their salaries? Because I know we don't pay them benefits. I know, uh, they get health care from previous jobs. So basically, just their salaries?
Yeah, pretty much their salaries and, um, you know, the overtime or-
Okay.
We have a substitute.
Okay. Um, so I did some quick math, you know, not being a math major, but I know the guards make about $38 an hour, which would be about $47,000 per guard, per year, if I multiply that times six guards. $282,000 is my rough math, and I'm pretty close, because your budgetary number's $278,000. So my question is to address a rumor that I heard recently that you are eliminating two security guard positions. Can anyone tell me that that's accurate?
Yes. Yeah, there'll be two, so there'll, there'll just be, um, uh, one in every building now, as opposed to multiple.
So if we're eliminating two guards at a cost of about $100,000 total, then I don't know why we're budgeting $278,000. That would seem to be $100,000 more than we really need.
I, I, actually, look, look in the budget here. Um, salary-wise, it's, um, uh, $242,000 is actually for the, the salaries. Um, we also, um, one of the security guards is a the school's security specialist, so he receives a $10,000 stipend. Uh, we have $10,000 in overtime and, or, sorry, $10,000 for substitute, substitutes, and $15,000 in overtime. Uh, we also have, um, uh, some, uh, the hall pass software that we use, uh, that, um, the annual fee for that is included in there, um, and also our, um, the class, uh, software that we use, um, that, um, annual fee is in there also. So that's, um, all those added up, add up to $15,000. Um, and then we also have the, um, panic buttons. As I mentioned, each school has those. Um, uh, our, um, cell phones is out of there, and also our, uh, burg alarm. We have, uh, monitoring, um, for, for each of the, um, uh, schools. Um, so that's included in there. Uh, let's see. And we also have some, um, uh, uniform costs, um, uh, some, uh, um, camera supplies. So if any cameras go down, we, we do have some money in there. Um, so that, that adds up to, um, the, the supplies adds up to $7,000, $750. Um, and the other, um, services is, is a $13,000. Uh, so it's not just, I, I misspoke one out when I said it was just salaries. It's, it's some of the other, um, services also.
Okay. Um, can someone explain why we're eliminating two security guard positions? That I know, uh, was a very challenging task for this district. It was a huge adjustment, I think, for parents, for teachers, um, for students, to get adjusted to having security guards in the school. I know there were painstaking efforts, uh, to finally get it done, right down to the details of what they wore. So it wasn't offensive, uh, so it wasn't overbearing, so it wasn't like it was a police state going in and taking over our schools. And I think they've done a tremendous job. Uh, I think they've become part of each individual school. I talked to parents at North End, South End, Middle School and High School, and I've yet to hear one person say a bad thing about them. I've only heard good things, like they are ingrained in those schools, where these professionals, these retired police officers, know students on a first-name basis. They know parents on a first-name basis. And I would think when it comes to, you know, you're going to manage it, and the superintendent will manage it, but obviously you said one for each school. Um, the middle school and the high school is a tremendous amount of real estate for one person to handle. And we talk about kids shoving stuff in the toilets. Well, that's $60,000 we spent on sewer cleaning. Now, a su- one extra security guard, having two in the high school is not going to stop everything. That I understand. But maybe we give ourselves a fighting chance if we keep them as opposed to eliminating two positions. So we're going to eliminate a North End, we'll eliminate a middle school, and we'll take someone and shove them over to, uh, this facility, but have one in each school. I think the elementary schools can handle, uh, one security officer, and I think they do a great job. But the middle school and the high school, as we know, is a tremendous amount of real estate for one person. And look at the trends on school shootings. Obviously, one is too many, but the hundreds that have been in recent years, primarily they're at middle school and high schools. So I think the focus should be to maintaining that robust staff that you have and not rely on subs, because subs aren't always going to be available. It's like teachers. I mean, you go down the list, right, and you hope to find somebody. And if you don't, you make ends meet, and you double up, whatever you have to do. But s- security officers, for this cost, I mean, I know the board gets, or the school gets $1.2 million a year from the town in pilot money. You're getting it for 25 years. So a third of that $1.2 million should fund your security guards for the next 23 years, and not have to go into any other pocket of money, not have to go into a tax levy, not have to go into grants, which I'm certainly sure are out there in the way of security, and I'm sure the school probably has grant writers, whether you outsource your grant writing or someone does it in-house, but there are grant writers available. A third of your pilot money that you get, and I imagine does, and I don't know, does the pilot money go into general fund?
Yes.
Okay, so that's $1.2 million of free money that this district is going to get for 23 more years. I'm asking you to take a third of that quote-unquote "free money" that you've only realized for the last two years. You've got 23 to go. Take a quarter, a third of that approximately, and put it into security. Because this is the first that I've heard of it, and I don't, I probably haven't been to a meeting since someone was yelling and screaming for Mr. Grosso to resign, and that was several years ago. And I'm thankful that things have been quiet, uh, since then, because it is a great community with a great school district. Um, I'm just asking to reconsider. I know budgets are tough, healthcare's through the roof, pension contributions, I get all that. But this is the first that I've heard, uh, recently, that you're going to eliminate two security positions. I don't know if it's been spoke of publicly before, and clearly not a big draw to the meeting. I just ask the board to reconsider and maybe look for some alternative methods, because talk to parents. You're in the district, uh, you may or may not have children in the, in the district, but I will tell you that, you know, as a parent, it's a crucial part and a secure feeling when you go there every day and see those school security officers, which for a year and approximately five months have become a fabric and part of those individual schools. So, um, I just ask that you look at that. I know there's a million and change in surplus. I'm not a big fan of dipping into that when we don't have to. I mentioned grants. Uh, you know, grants are out there for a lot of different things. Hopefully, the board and the administration continues to look at grants. If you don't have an outside grant writer, uh, it's certainly something to look at if you don't already have it. But I meant, you know, I wrote down the vapes right at the end, and I don't expect them to be the police officers of the school, but they can be an added resource to your high school personnel to do some spot checks of the restrooms. Uh, there are no female security officers, so that would create a problem if the problem is occurring in the girls' room as opposed to the boys' room. Uh, I'd be in favor of certainly hiring another security officer and have a female assigned to the high school, but that's a different conversation. I want to try to keep the six that we have. And I just think of this, and I leave you with this thought. The high school and the middle school is a tremendous piece of real estate for one person to be responsible for. It, it is a lot, and I just ask the board to give that further consideration before they make that final decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, at this point, we conclude that portion of the meeting and announcements-
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, come on, come on up. Yeah, come on, come on up.
Speak of these things.
It's okay.
Joe Mongello, forty-seven Anderson Parkway. So I wasn't really planning on speaking, but I did hear the same rumor about the guards. I don't know if we're really answered of why we're eliminating them. You know, he did ask that question, and I didn't hear an answer of why we're eliminating them. But I'm gonna give my two cents on it. I think a lot of times with these life safety, um, systems, uh, security, it's, uh, it's a cost, and nobody wants to spend on that cost. But if you have a problem, everyone's gonna be begging for these officers. I don't know if the reason, with the reasoning is, I will, you know, jump on the fact that he said, you know, I'm at North End. That guard's fantastic, you know, with the kids' names. I ran into a lot of the other guards, you know, just, I don't have any kids in the other, you know, buildings, but they've been fantastic. And, uh, it's kind of disappointing to hear, sorry, that, uh, you're gonna eliminate two guards. I think that position, I always, uh, you know, it seems like an easy job, right, for the most part, ninety-nine percent chance nothing's gonna happen, but it's also the worst job in the world to have when you were the last line of defense between a active shooter and those children. So, um, I think eliminating security is a big mistake. I think it's a, uh, God forbid something happens, you're really, you know, put in a bad spot, and there's probably a lot of places you could cut other than the forty thousand dollars for some guards. So especially because this was a referendum years ago. It was voted on, you know, comes out of taxpayer money, and then it's just like, ah, well, we're, we're out of, you know, we ran out of money, or we're gonna do something else, like, better find the money somewhere else. I think it's a real bad move. That's my opinion, I'm not on the board. And I bet you a lot of people in the town don't even realize that this is happening, because we heard the rumor, and I'm like thumbing through the paperwork, and I'm actually, you know, going, I don't see it, maybe this isn't happening. And then, you know, thankfully, he said something and you confirmed it. So I do ask you to reconsider it. You know, like I said, I think the majority of the township likes them. I think they, they're great with the kids. And like I said, I hope we never use them. I hope you never need your fire alarm system. I hope we never need the access control system. But when you need it, everyone's gonna be begging and wishing they had it. So it's, uh, I think it's a real, you're putting yourself in a real sticky situation by eliminating somebody, especially if you have someone call out. I guess you're gonna have a sub, but those subs don't know the kids, they don't know the school, and when there's an incident, their reaction time, you're talking seconds to respond. And, uh, I think having a steady guard in these schools that know these children, know these schools, is the best way to go. So I would strongly recommend that you reconsider it. Thank you. And if you could answer why we're eliminating it, I guess, I don't know.
Okay, you know, you both make very valid points, and we will, um, take it back and further discussion and come back with our response. I do appreciate both of you making your comments. Okay. Sorry? Sure. Say your name.
My name is Jason Crasnow. I live at forty-four Lewood Road in Cedar Grove. I would like to ask you about agenda item I. eleven, elimination of position to approve the elimination of the Director of Guidance and School Counseling. I would like to know what the rationale is for that. We've recently had one guidance person turn over. Now, within the span of, I think, about a year or two, this is a second one. And I understand that personnel changes happen. But I'd love to know why eliminate the position now, especially given current concerns and public events related to mental health.
So was the decision that, um, the board and the administration, a long time talking about and for the overall direction of where we're going at the immediate time? That was the decision that we made at this point?
Okay, as, as a resident of the town, um, you know, without, without too intensely attacking the issue, what I'd like to know is, what about the direction of the district?
The direction, the district is going in the same direction it was when we instituted that, uh, position. It was just a reassignment of, um, responsibilities that the current position entails is being reassigned to other. We're not reducing, we're not eliminating any programs. We're not eliminating any services. We're just restructuring in the way we deliver it.
Okay, so I understand that it was a recently produced position, and now there's a restructuring. That's, that's easily understandable. I guess my second follow-up would be then, what is being done on those issues? Because I know, you know, five, ten, I can't speak for five, but ten, fifteen years ago, we really didn't have much, not only for mental health, but for things like disability compliance and H.I.B. It, it was a tire fire.
Yeah, so we've made significant growth in that area, and it's continued to be, uh, an ongoing development. So we have programs in, uh, instituted in all our buildings, mental health programs, and Mr. Grosso can speak to them more, because, you know, he oversees all of that, but we have mental health programs in all of our buildings for all of our students. We have, uh, school counselors. Well, we increased our, uh, child study team member to make our school psychologists and social workers more available to be more hands-on with the mental health component, so.
So you, you affirmative, you have swapped out the child study teams?